El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelor's, 74 master's, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily. All county offices will be closed on Monday, November 11th in observance of the Veterans Day holiday. All county offices will reopen on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse, located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, October 28th, 2019. Commissioners' Court is meeting for regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you like to wait because I know he's gonna do the invocation?
I can tell him.
So he's here.
Can't touch him.
She's gonna wipe you away.
Thank you, those very little messages.
Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation for Eric Chavez?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
May I, sir?
Thank you.
Good morning to everyone who's present. Peace, love, and joy be with everyone. If you will join me in this invocation, dear higher power of our spiritual understanding, we come together as one to agree upon seeking wisdom this morning. Teach us to be wise in our inmost being. We come together as one agreeing that whenever two or more are gathered, there is power in sharing that unity with one another. We ask to fill us with diligent hands and strong hearts to serve our city, El Paso, Texas, the best way that we can possibly. Wherever we may have failed or created delay, we ask for the guidance from on high to give us the direction we need to take to manifest the absolute best for our city, its people, and our country. We ask for the peace, love, and joy that comes from above to help us serve one another, our families, friends, and the beautiful city of El Paso, Texas. As we've come to understand our higher power, we send our highest and best intentions through this invocation. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You may have a copy.
Oh, thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it here.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 14. Are there any items that members of the court or public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Betas is asking Commissioner Lao?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five is public comments. I don't believe we have anybody signed up to speak today for public comments. No action for item number five. Item number six, litigation, justice, and law enforcement. Approved and authorized, the county judge to sign the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, FY19 award in the amount of $208,705 to be shared equally between the county and the city of El Paso from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2023, with no match required. Contract number 2019-0744.
Is it Commander?
Commander Chides, are you gonna speak to this item? Is that Edward Byrne Memorial Justice, or is that Isabel?
Yes, my dear.
Isabel.
Good morning, Commander.
Thanks so quickly. Thank you all for being patient with us.
Commander or county judge, commissioners, Isabel Hernandez from the Budget and Fiscal Policy and Grants Division. Our fiscal year 19 JAG Award was just announced to us and we share this grant, as we've done in the past, half of it with the city of El Paso and the Sheriff's Office shares 10% of its half with the DA's office for their paperless file system. And the PD this year is gonna be asking for handheld radios. And the Sheriff's Office this year is asking for two items. It was the e-citations systems and the AFIS, the Automatic Finger Identification System. And we have Bernie from the Sheriff's Office here that would like to tell you a little bit more about her request.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bernadette Ortega. I'm a supervisor for the Crime Scene Unit at the Sheriff's Office. We are gonna upgrade our AFIS system, the Automated Fingerprint Identification System, to coincide with Citi as well. The parent company, Morpho, is requiring us to upgrade, no matter what. If we don't upgrade, we're gonna lose the system. And PD is also in the same process of upgrading their system. They house the mainframe as well as, I believe, six to eight workstations. So they're looking at a budget of over 100 million. Or not 100 million, sorry, 1 million. And we're just asking for one workstation so that the Sheriff's Department can remain functional.
Motion to approve?
Commissioner Betas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lao?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number seven, approved and authorized, the county judge to accept the state criminal alien assistance grant award for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Detention Bureau in the amount of $221,651, with no match required. Contract number 2019-0765.
Judge Commissioners, Molly Hargrave from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. This program pays the county for those state criminal alien assistance programs. Those funds are deposited in the general fund as a reimbursement for costs incurred for that service. Just as a matter of information, the six-year average has spent about $275,000. This is down about 26% from last year's. Last year, we received $299,000. So it is on a downward trend of funding. We've seen it go down before and spike back up. It just takes place with the annual appropriations set by the federal government for reimbursing eligible counties.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Betas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lao?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, approved and authorized, the county judge to sign the Southwest Border Rural Law Enforcement Assistance Grant from the US Department of Justice for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office for an intelligence analyst and operating expenses in the amount of $199,895 from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2021, with no match required. Contract number 2019-0775.
Again, Isabel Hernandez from the Budget and Fiscal Policy from the Grants Division. This is gonna be the first time that we applied to this grant. There was a need for an intelligence analyst there at the Sheriff's Office. And this grant will be for two years to help with the data-driven operations that they might need, as well as some operation expenses, training, and some travel for this particular person to get the right training for this job.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Betas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lao?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine with a correction from the Grants Department. Approved and accepted, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality's Texas Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Program Grant in the amount of $94,799 with the county matched in the amount of $57,991 for the purchase of a transport bus for the Sheriff's Office from October 20, 2019 through August 31st, 2021. Funding is available in General Fund G Admin Transfer Out Grant Match. Contract number 2019-0785.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. We're respectfully asking for approval for the signing. As you know, we came before you before to ask for permission to apply for the grant. We did get approval for the grant. And at this point, once we do get approval for you to purchase this bus, we must make arrangements to destroy the existing bus we can. It has to be destroyed under the grant. It has to be completely destroyed. We have to submit photographs and documents identifying that we have eliminated the bus from fleet. They don't wanna it back out. Somebody, you know, selling it somewhere else. So there's a process. But in order for us to start the process, we first have to prove that we have purchased a new bus. And while that process is going on, as soon as that bus comes in, we will take that bus out of the fleet and make arrangements to destroy it.
Commissioner Mio? Commander, maybe this is more for Christina. Is this part of the lawsuit that the county has insofar as us joining the Volkswagen lawsuit?
I know that this has been part of the previous discussion with the court.
Christina, if Hope-Tin can speak to this because Hope-Tin's been our point contact on this settlement, this Volkswagen settlement.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Hope-Tin, State Full Fleet Operations Director. It's a lawsuit that's actually, it's a federal lawsuit that the government sued Volkswagen. Each state was divvying up a certain amount of monies. I believe the state of Texas got 54 million. What they're doing, they're starting off with phases. The first phase is for the school buses. We had one bus that was eligible. We applied. We got the grant. The second phase coming up is for refuse trucks. And they're planning to apply. We have our three box sweepers. We're gonna try to get reimbursement for replacing. So it's not so much the county suing. It's already a lawsuit that's been settled. The money was given to the environmental folks to manage. And it's part of the emission reduction. That's why it's through TECQ to replace older vehicles with newer, either CNG or modern diesel cleaner burning fuel.
I knew about that one, but so it ties into ours?
It was tied. So we had brought back before the court, several months ago. I might have even been probably about a year ago. And so this was part of the discussion in terms of the settlement and how they're working through TECQ and how those dispersments were coming out.
So it ties into ours?
Yes.
Right. It's like I said, it's a lawsuit that's already been settled and the funding is there. We're just trying to get what we can out of it.
This is where they settled at the federal level. The federal level distributed it to all states. And then the states are, we're supposed to make two separate funds with this money.
That's right.
This is first phase and this is one of the funds. I don't know all the details yet on how they're supposed to distribute the second funds down to a local level.
Right. So it's by region. El Paso is an entertainment region, so that's why we get priority to go after this. And it's a first come, first served grant. We were one of the first to submit for the bus. We have six buses, but only one was actually eligible.
And the one we're gonna destroy, what year is that?
It's 2009. It's almost... No, I'm sorry. Yes, 2009. It's 2009.
In my home, it's new.
But it's really about the emissions and what it's putting out into the atmosphere?
Correct. So the way the funds are allocated or the amount is based on the age of the bus, but also the reduction from the old bus to the new bus, the reduction in emission. So it's worth it. And they're giving us almost 100,000 towards a $150,000 bus. Right. And even though, just one more thing, Judge, Commissioner. Even though we have buses that's older, again, the grants stipulate the year of the bus and also it had to be registered or in use. So we just can't get a bus that's sitting auctioned. Whatever we're replacing have to be in use because it's an emission reduction grant. So if the bus is not being used, it's producing zero emissions. So it wouldn't be eligible.
Thank you.
And we need a motion and a...
Also move. Second?
Commissioner Betas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lao?
Aye.
Commissioner Stow?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 10, approved and authorized, the county judge to sign the grant award from the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, Crime Victims Unit, in the amount of $330,694 with a required cash match of $82,896 from October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2021. Funding is available in General Fund Esso Voca Transfer Out Grant Match. Contract number 2019-0792.
Judge Commissioners, Isabel Hernandez from the Grants and Fiscal Policy Grants Division. from the Grants and Fiscal Policy Grants Division. Here I have with me Gladys Carmona, supervisor from the Grants Victim Services Unit there at the Sheriff's Office. Well, she'll be able to fill in more on what we do with this grant. Will be a renewal grant for the last past several years.
Hi, good morning. My name is Gladys Carmona and with the Sheriff's Office Victim Services. Just to add on, I mean, this has been such a beneficial grant to us, we've had since oh-nine. And it's continued on where we've been able to assist numerous victims. These past two years, we've assisted over three thousand victims, victims that would have fallen through the cracks. Victims that we've been able to assist accompaniment court to obtain protective orders, assisting them financially through various services, referring them to various agencies as needed. And with the incident that happened August third, we were able to assist numerous victims that were continuing to serve to this day that we're serving. So I mean, I wanna thank you for allowing us this opportunity to continue this grant.
Thank you.
Motion to approve? Second?
Commissioner Betas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lella?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaney?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number eleven. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Interoperable Communication Grant funded by the Office of the Governor awarded to the Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Unit in the amount of one-hundred-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars from October first, two thousand nineteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Further, authorize the county judge to sign the company resolution. There is no county match required. Contract number twenty-nineteen zero-eight-one-one.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Armando Alves with the Sheriff's Office, asking the court to accept this one-hundred-and-eight-thousand-dollar grant award from the Office of the Governor of Homeland Security. It'll be, this funding will be utilized to purchase end-of-life radios that are inside of our marked units. We're looking at possibly being able to purchase about twenty mobile radios.
What do they call it? End-of-life radios?
Yes, pretty much they're...
It catches my ear.
Yeah, every time I mention that, Commissioner, you always, you always come back to me on that. But yes, there is no firmware, no updates, no way to do anything with them. Once they go off the air, that's it. So we have a total of two-hundred-and-twenty marked units that need to be replaced. This will be able to cover at least twenty of them.
Motion to approve? Second?
Commissioner Betas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lella?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaney?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, Health and Social Services. Disgust and Take Appropriate Action to Assist Centro de Salud Familiar La Fe with Replacement of One HVAC Unit at the Montana Vista Resource Center in the amount of eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Funding is available in CP Improvement O One Miscellaneous.
Good morning, County Judge Commissioners, Ivy Malenzuela, Community Services Department. I'm here before you requesting the court to determine and decide whether we can assist the Centro de Salud Familiar La Fe with a replacement of a HVAC unit at the Montana Vista Resource Center. That center is county-owned, operated by La Fe under a service agreement that stayed in back till two thousand and five when we entered in a service agreement with them. Last month, La Fe approached me to let me know that two of the three units were not operating anymore. And so I approached Facilities to check to see in that portion of the contract whether the county or La Fe was responsible for those repairs or replacement of those units. Through discussions with the contract administrator, the facilities determined that La Fe is indeed responsible under their service agreement to replace these units. They also went out and did an assessment on all three. They have a third one that is operable right now, but it's not working under optimal conditions. And so Facilities also determined that that third one needs to be replaced as well. Facilities also solicited and required with a county vendor and received a quote to replace all three units. That amount is approximately twenty-five-thousand dollars for the replacement of all three units. At that point, La Fe and I and Facilities met and respectfully about who would be replacing and how the work was gonna happen. La Fe did approach and ask if the county could contribute a portion of the cost of replacing the units. I asked La Fe if they could at least pay for two units and I would ask the court to identify funds to replace a third unit. That third unit is in a location in the building where our county's senior nutrition program serves meals during the hours of eleven to one. And so there's a particular urgency for our county program to have that third unit replaced. La Fe agreed that they would, could come up with the cost of replacing two units and asked if the county could come in with a replacement of the third unit. That cost is approximately eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars. This was discussed with the county attorney's office. They're here to be having questions as well, so is La Fe. This is a one-time assistance that the court were to approve. This is not something that the county is responsible for on a regular basis. La Fe understands that. There will be some type of contract or agreement or amendment to their services agreement to memorialize this one-time assistance if they were to do.
Judge Commissioners, I would just note, I mean, this is an agreement that was entered into fourteen years ago, correct?
Yes.
And it is a group who is providing really important services in an area where, you know, as one of our goals, we've talked about advancing community support services. This is one way that we do advance community support services. And if you've ever visited out in this area, the services and the things that are happening at this facility are phenomenal. And so I don't know why the contract was written the way it was written when it was written. It's definitely something I think we need to revisit in all contracts that involve county buildings. I think we need to reconsider who's supposed to be maintaining that building, whether it should be the contractor or the county. These are our assets. So I would ask that you support this item. Even though La Fe was originally contractually obligated, I think the services that they're providing out there and we're just simply, we're providing the building, the facility to do it out of, are extremely important to these areas.
Judge?
Yes, Commissioner Robinson?
Couple of questions. So what does the contract say for their monetary contribution or the payment?
No, sir. In exchange for providing these services to the community of Montana Vista, they're operating this building lease-free.
They're getting lease-free. And they don't do maintenance, so we have to pick up the bill of maintenance?
No, no, they are responsible for the maintenance.
No, but they're asking now.
For this major maintenance, they are asking for our assistance?
For assistance, yes, sir.
For our building to...
I understand our building, but they're standing free?
But they're providing a service that if they weren't providing, there would probably be additional demands on the community and on the county. So, I mean...
And do we, do we do, do we do the same for other entities? Do we have other entities standing residing in our facilities free of charge?
I'm not aware. Just to give you a brief history of how this came about. In the early two thousands, so we have two, this involved two county-owned community center buildings. One is in Sparks. This other one is in Montana Vista. The buildings were built through a partnership between the county and the Texas A&amp;M Colonias Program many, many years ago. And it was staffed by the Colonias Program at that point. They had a grant that allowed them to staff it and we were providing services through this partnership. The Colonias Program lost that specific grant and left the community centers vacant. And they were vacant for many years. They fell in disrepair. And so the Commissioners Court at that time felt we needed to have these buildings operable to provide a service to the community because that was the purpose. We built these buildings in underserved disenfranchised communities to provide public services and we weren't doing that. And so the Commissioners Court at that time underwent an RFP process. La Fe was one of the, or RFQ rather, La Fe was one of the vendors who submitted a bid to run the Montana Vista Center. I'm not sure, I don't recall. This predates my time, but I understand. I'm not sure that anyone was running the Spark Center, but I do know that La Fe was awarded that process in two thousand and five to operate Montana Vista. The agreement was, in exchange to provide these public services to a community that had been underserved, La Fe would operate it lease-free. And so they report monthly on all their services that they provide. They provide citizenship passes, health and wellness, incredible youth programs. They do provide a lot of services to the Montana Vista community.
How about operation maintenance? The contract required you in reporting all the operation maintenance?
Yes, sir.
So they issue operation maintenance? And so have, and we just ignore it?
You know, La Fe was responsible for operation and maintenance through budgetary purposes. La Fe's here, they can answer why some of that happened. They are responsible ultimately. But it's, they are providing a service to the community. This is our building.
No, I'm not questioning you from a standpoint that I'm not supportive of. But the thing is that if they're required to do things by contract, they do have navigation to fulfill that and not wait until the eleventh hour and say, hey, we got a problem. The system didn't go down yesterday.
Right.
It went down, got in disrepair a long time ago. So would you say to La Fe this?
Yes. Mr. Gonzales?
Good morning. My name is Robert Gonzales. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Centro de Salud Familiar La Fe.
I'm very familiar with your organization. You've got a very good... I just have a question. When you do your operation maintenance before you do your budgetary, is that included in your budget?
What we do is, in this case, there was this unit we're anticipating, anticipating to replace it within ten years. We were able to maintain it another five years just by maintaining it and doing the maintenance, monthly maintenance for it. But it just got to a point now and you gotta understand Montana Vista is very different than what it is here because you get a lot of sand and stuff. And so every month, they had to clean it out and stuff like that. So, yeah, it is, but we had not budgeted to replace all three at the same time is what our issue is. Gotta realize that from the beginning, this unit, this facility was in disarray. I mean, it was complete. We had, we had to redo the septic system, the toilets, the bathrooms, a lot of maintenance on it. And that was the reason that the county didn't want it because they couldn't afford it back then to pay for that. But we were willing to come in and step in and replace and do that units that we have. So now we've gotten to the point that we said we would do it for every five years up through the twentieth year where there's still another five-year option on it. But we're willing to do and invest in the community and continue to do that. But we just needed some assistance at this point.
Well, based on circumstances, I would support this on a one-time basis with the understanding that we, you, La Fe was developing an operation maintenance plan so that we don't have this juncture again.
Understood. What was your, bet to your idea, look at this this time and then sort of figure the contract so there won't be any...
Gray area?
Gray area, Phil.
So I guess...
Thank you, Mr. Gonzales. Yeah, we've been willing to go the additional because there's still another five-year option that we can do on this grant. And we're willing to do that. And we don't mind. We've been talking about what we need to do as far as the maintenance is still good. Thank you, Mr. Gonzales.
The second option is extended through September twenty-twenty and then thereafter, you have a third option for an initial five years. That's correct. And so I'd...
But if there's any amendments, which I read, if the court approves today, there would be an amendment to the current contract and then they would, it's something they would address in the future before we renew again.
But I thank you for all the other things that you've done without our help to our... I think we're here to help the community, just as you all are. We wanna continue that.
Commissioner Leo?
Just a side note. Approximately how many patients does a city receive a year?
At that location or overall?
At that location.
At that location, we don't have any clinical services there. What we have is we bring a bunch of different agencies that come in and provide the services. It can depend on the GED ESL classes. There are some, Texas Tech does come in and does provide some health education. There is some other classes that are brought in that, but it's not specific health like it is at our other clinics. If there's no clinic, there's agencies that are brought in. Sort of a resource... Resource type, yeah. There's legal classes, immigration information. Voting is done there also. You all set the voting sometimes in the application.
Thank you. Thank you. I make a second to that motion.
So just to be clear on the record, the motion would be to provide assistance to Centro de Salud Familiar La Fe with the replacement of one HVAC unit at the Montana Vista Resource Center in the amount of eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars. Thank you.
On a one-time basis?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Betas?
Aye.
Commissioner Lella?
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Gonzalez, thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Thank you.
Item number thirteen, human resources. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement between the County of El Paso and the El Paso County Community Supervision and Corrections Department for human resources services and employee benefits from January first, twenty twenty through December thirty first, twenty twenty. Contract number twenty eighteen zero 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 seven.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Sam Trujillo with the Human Resources Department. Purpose of to today's agenda item is to seek the Commissioners' Court approval on an interlocal agreement between the County and El Paso El Paso County Community Supervision and Corrections Department, C S C D, for human resource services and for specific employee benefits. So the County currently has an interlocal agreement with El Paso C S C D for human resources services for about a hundred and eighty-two employees. In twenty eighteen, El Paso County C S C D requested for the County to provide their employees the opportunity to participate in certain certain county benefits which were identified as employee monthly parking, gym services, and the IRS Section four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan. Currently, the government code in Chapter seventy-six allows for the County to provide benefits to C S C D employees similar to benefits that we provide county employees once we establish an agreement. The County currently offers the ability for county employees to voluntarily participate in gym services and or deferred compensation plan through payroll deduction. So this interlocal agreement would give C S C D employees the ability to participate in these benefits under the terms that we have already negotiated with the specific vendors for those services. So basically, under gym services, C S C D employees would be able to pay for gym services at the three county contracted vendors using payroll deduction and will be able to participate in the County's Fitness and Wellness Center sometime here in the future. For deferred compensation, C S C D employees will be able to join the County's deferred compensation County's deferred compensation plan with Nationwide and pay for those benefits through payroll deduction. The one that's a little bit different would be parking. So the first two services, the County does not have any direct costs. We're providing those benefits to C S C D employees and we basically serve as a pass-through between employees and to the vendors once the contract's negotiated. For parking at the downtown garages and the M D R parking lot, the County currently charges county employees and those individuals who receive a county stipend an employee rate of thirty dollars per month. Approval of this agreement will result in El Paso County C S C D employees being charged a county employee rate of also thirty dollars per month instead of the non-employee rate of eighty dollars per month. This is not a new concept as contracting with C S C D has been one of our projects that we had discussed with the Commissioners' Court when we were doing previous parking presentations. This is one of our moving forward items. Of the hundred and eighty-two C S C D employees, seventeen are currently utilizing the monthly parking garage at a thirty-dollar rate, which was frozen at the time we were negotiating this contract, and five are utilizing the M D R parking lot through payroll deduction. Currently, we have approximately seven hundred and forty-two county employees on our parking plan right now and we do not expect the addition of the C S C D employees stationed downtown, which is a limited number to have a significant impact on our parking operations. There will also be a dollar four per pay period charge to each C S C D employee participating in any of these voluntary benefits. The fee is equivalent to what the County's Riskful Board is paying per member for for benefits online enrollment system, which is going to be the system that we use to to provide this benefit. This interlocal agreement before you also updates and merges the existing Human Resources Services contract between the County and the Community Supervision and Corrections Department with this with these specific employee benefits. There are no significant changes to the this contract as far as the Human Resources Services is concerned, but we did do cleanup language. The Human Resources Department right now, after reviewing this contract, does recommend approval of this interlocal agreement to become effective on January one, twenty twenty. We currently are down to forty employees that are on our waiting list and that was that was from about a year ago where we had a hundred and forty. So over the next two months, we should be able to get those employees on into our parking garage and then be able to accept the C S C D employees both here and at the M D R parking lot. And I'm free to answer any questions.
Richard Robinson.
Oh, yeah, I'm glad you answered that question, but it was on the waiting list. Were you sure that those individuals were on the waiting list will be given space in the garage before we start accommodating those other individuals on the contract?
Yes, sir. Most of the individuals that are parking from C S C D are already in the parking garage, but there we do expect some additional C S C D employees and they would come after the individuals that are on the parking list right now. And still can't still can't enjoy this parking rate until after January one.
Right. So by January one, all those on the waiting list will be accommodated?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Ed, I have one question just to clarify on the dollar four per employee per pay period. My understanding with discussing with staff and C S C D is that that's the number. You're basing it off the number of employees, but the C S C D is going to pay it, not the employees. It's part of the agreement.
Yes.
So that it won't be won't be charged to the employees on their paycheck currently. It'll be the C S C D paying it, but that's just your logic of concocting the amount.
That is correct because the 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 idea is that county employees are also paying for that online enrollment system through their premiums in the in the health.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer? So you got okay?
Yes.
You're okay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
May I be some?
Judge Commissioners, I just want to correct something quickly on item nine. The bus that we're replacing is actually a model year nineteen ninety-nine. It's a two thousand twenty-year-old bus, not a two thousand old.
Thank you.
It's a little older.
It's within the expectations.
Item number fourteen, approve and authorize the deletion of the overtime pay policy. Approve and authorize the naming of the overtime general policy to overtime compensation policy and approve and authorize the revisions within the newly titled overtime compensation policy.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners, Michelle Cochran with the Human Resources Department. We have this policy in front of you today. And just for clarification, we had two policies previously, your overtime general and your overtime pay, which were separate policies, but we've combined them all into one now so that we're not having redundant policies within our policies. And so we've combined them and put them in the overtime compensation policy. In addition, we added a section called emergency overtime and this section covers employees whose duties and responsibilities are essential as designated in the event of an emergency. And emergency is defined as as non-recurring, unexpected or dangerous situations for the public requiring immediate attention such as flooding or a snow or ice storm. So if, for example, our employees of the Public Works Department need to work in the colonias when we have floods, that's a non-recurring item and in those instances, they would be paid monetarily versus with comp time as comp time is accrued right now for employees in overtime situations. And then it identifies that we do have the funds budgeted in our it is budgeted in our annual budget process in in our contingency fund. So.
This is a practice we've been engaging in ever since the court established the funding, but this is just a policy to match what we're doing.
Are there any questions on the overtime?
Commissioner Gonzalez. I don't know if Melissa had any comments. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen, approve and authorize the revisions to the county civil service coverage and exclusions policy.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners, Michelle Cochran with the Human Resources Department. The edits you see in front of you to this policy are based on reclassifications or retitles that have occurred recently and new titles that we added to include our chief of our chief of operations, chief aide and governmental affairs manager to be excluded from civil service coverage by rule. That rule is based on the duties that they are assigned, the prior the information that they are pretty to. And so we added that. You will see this policy in front of you in the near future again as we are continually trying to improve our policies. And so there are some additional edits that we are making, but we wanted to ensure to capture these titles timely. Do you have any questions on on the edits to this policy?
Commissioners, that is Melissa, any additional comments?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Melissa Carillo with Human Resources. The one thing I just wanted to clarify, especially for the new members on the court, this is a policy that either lists those positions that are exempt by law or those that are exempt based on fire appearance before the court to exempt them. And so some positions that are listed within this policy are automatically exempted. Your department heads, your attorneys, members of the auditors department, and different statutory guidelines are what exempt them. However, we've taken the opportunity of exempting other positions as department heads choose or delegate to be exempt, and it's usually due to high discretionary authority, confidentiality and situations like that. But we are continuously looking at this. We're working with our county attorney's office because we want to simplify the policy rather than continue to keep bringing this to you every time a position changes or is retitled. We want to figure out a way to simplify it so that it may be much easier so that we're not coming before you every few months. So you'll see us come back with some kind of solution in the near future.
Thank you.
The only other thing, if we could entertain an amendment is on District Number twenty-six, there is no deputy director for public works.
If we could approve it as amended, we can take care of that all in one shot today. That would be great. Can I see?
Make a motion to to approve with the language that we just added?
Second.
Or deleted, right?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Melissa, Michelle, thank you so much.
Can we like to go ahead and pull item, sorry, the purchasing items before we get into the I T item? Item number seventeen, purchasing. Approve and authorize the purchase of online legal research services for the public defender's office using Department of Information Resources contract D I R Legal C A L I R O two awarded to Thomas Reuters doing business at West Publishing Corporation of Carroll Stream, Illinois in the amount of seventeen thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars for the first year. Purchasing approved on October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Funding is available in general fund, public defender books and subscriptions.
Deborah Correjo Troll, county purchasing agent. In this case, I'm requesting approval for the district attorney's office. I'm sorry, the public defender's office. Boy, the district attorneys would have been surprised with it. The public defender's office to use the D I R contract to get their online research. This is seventeen thousand and I know you're used to seeing things over fifty thousand, but the reason is they want to do this multi-year. And by law, we really need to look at things in the entire contract. And so ultimately, over the course of five years, this will be over fifty thousand. So we felt it was best to have it come through in the first year. And if you approve this, I believe the contract will come to you at a later date.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eighteen, approve and authorize the purchase of VMware software support for information technology department using Department of Information Resources contract D I R T S O three nine two six awarded to Sequel Data Systems Incorporated of Austin, Texas in the amount of one hundred thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Purchasing approved on October twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Funding is available in general fund, I T D, maintenance, repair, software.
Deborah Correjo Troll, county purchasing agent. In this case, we're also requesting award through the Department of Information Resource Technology contract. This is the VMware. I believe that this is what monitors and suggests corrective actions for problems we're having in our I T systems. If you approve this, I I know the contract is coming relatively soon.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number sixteen, information technology. Approve and authorize county judge to sign agreement for VMware production support and subscriptions between the County of El Paso and Sequel Data Systems Incorporated. Funding is available in general fund, I T D, maintenance, repair, software. Contract number twenty nineteen zero eight one eight.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, Susie Estevavale, information technology manager. The item before you is a request to renew and consolidate the product licensing utilized in the virtualization of the County of El Paso server environment. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
By relatively soon, this is the contract for the bid we just awarded.
Correct?
And this is something we're working towards and I will say I T has really worked hard to be this way. Chris came from a city and and as you know, I did too. And both of us talked about it was very common at cities when you had a bid award, the contract was on the same agenda. And we've been working with legal on how can we make that possible? Because we're negotiating with the vendor during the purchase once we've identified. So those negotiations are the details for the contract. And so we're working to try to expedite the time between when we work with a vendor and we have a contract ready because it slows us down from implementation when we don't have the contract. So I just wanted to share when Deborah said you'd be seeing the contract relatively soon, she meant really relatively soon. So, yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez, second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Item number nineteen, budget and finance. Approve and authorize county judge to sign the agreement for investment advisory services by and between El Paso County and Hilltop Securities Asset Management LLC for a two-year term with three additional one-year terms upon mutual agreement in the amount of sixty thousand dollars per year. Funding is available in general fund, budget, contract services, general. Contract number twenty nineteen zero two seven one.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Wally Harrow from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. This is one of the items we had in our strategic listing and goals set for last year. We started negotiating this agreement and working with the vendor and internal department six months ago on receipt of the original contract from the vendor. As noted in the agenda item, this is an investment advisory service agreement. We did look at the possibility of doing a full service agreement. That's that feasibility is still being looked at by our county attorney's office and and will be brought up at a later date in time if that is a possible option. I outlined this and this investment agreement allows a vendor to assist us with analyzing risk return on investments. They will attend relevant investment-related meetings, recommend securities for us to consider for the county to consider selecting, offer advice on our investment portfolio. They'll review our investment policy and provide feedback on any changes on investment policies. They'll also assist in the creation of your statutory required investment quarterly reports. With that, available for any questions. I want to thank the staff from Public Works, Tax Office and Auditors who assisted in the selection of the firm and the review of the bids. And then Ms. Rosales, my county attorney, so we've gone back and forth with the vendor a number of times on getting this agreement before you today. Vendor, once we do, vendor's already agreed the agreement, once that is initiated, it's about a forty-five to sixty-day turnaround time on in them in here, meeting with the team, collecting the relevant information so that the process can begin. Of course, our ultimate goal is to improve return on investments and and diversify our our portfolio. This is a market-driven type of arrangement. So as as the market changes and interest rates on the types of products that we consider buying in the future fluctuate, that performance would have a direct impact on the return on investment. I want to thank Mr. Deion also and his team for working with us on this agreement.
Ted, any comments from your?
No, we agree. Basically everything in the in the agreement right now. And I think we welcome the opportunity to try to be more aggressive and to have the expertise to assist us in getting into those instruments so that we can maintain, you know, liquidity, safety, but also bring in additional revenue for the county.
Thank you. Want to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, I just also want to mention, this really came at the urging of Commissioner Perez some time back. And so we appreciate this exercise that we've been through. And going forward, we plan to monitor the cost to having the services over time and how it impacts our returns. And this will be something we'll be able to to measure and see how we're doing on. And so we'll keep the court informed as we go forward.
And it's it's an excellent firm. I had the opportunity to hear them at the Investments Conference and they they provide the service for other counties, but they really go through a very comprehensive process analyzing a county's finances, how much is is available to actually invest so we can ensure that we're getting the best return for for the taxpayer. So so thanks for for all your hard work on this, but it really is a quality firm.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number twenty, approve amendment number two to the County of El Paso's twenty nineteen through twenty twenty operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase capital projects by nine hundred and six thousand dollars, thus increasing the overall budget of four hundred and sixty-nine million, two hundred forty-two thousand, twenty-five dollars and thirteen cents to four hundred and seventy million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, twenty-five dollars and thirteen cents.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Wally Harrow from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Your backup for this agenda item was sent to you with last week's highlights. Were there any questions?
Commissioner Gonzalez? Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Lo?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just want to thank the county attorney's office for that.
That just means I think we're.
That's what she said.
This completes all the items on today's agenda, Judge.
Thank you.
Is that a personal vest?
No, not yet. But it is.
Well, thank you.
About fifty minutes.
This completes today's meeting at ten twenty-eight A M.
No.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.